We'll call the meeting to order for the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee for Thursday, March 24th. If you could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with our introduction of members.
Josiah Jarrett, Blackstone.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Steve Tringalli, Millville.
Griffin Riley, student representative.
Dave Johnson, Assistant Superintendent.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
Thank you very much. And first, we have our first public forum. And we actually have awards and recognition underneath for Mrs. Jean Sheridan being awarded School Nutrition Association of Mass Director of the Year. Would you mind coming up to our of honor?
Awesome.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vinoco, and welcome to Mrs. Sheridan. Just as a quick aside, you know, we focus a lot on the professional staff, and rightly so because of the impact of teaching and learning on our students. But we also have an awful lot of other people in this district who support our students' learning, and from custodial staff to paraprofessionals to building administrators assistants and our food service staff. So it is with great pleasure that I received this letter last week. And this is from Silvana Bryan, who is the president of the School Nutrition Association of Massachusetts. Dear Jean, it gives me great pleasure to congratulate you on being awarded the School Nutrition Association of Massachusetts Director of the Year Award. This award is considered the highest honor a school nutrition director can earn. This award is given to the director who successfully demonstrates their skill in coordinating extraordinary program enhancements, management and development of staff, involvement in the SNA, school involvement, and community outreach. You have been identified as a director that exceeds in all of these areas. Congratulations on a job well done. The Blackstone Millville Regional School District and the School Nutrition Association are lucky to have you in the nutrition field. As the state winner for Massachusetts, you will be recognized at the SNA of Massachusetts Fall Conference. Invitation to be sent out this fall in Worcester, Massachusetts on Tuesday, October 25th, 2016. I wish you sincere congratulations on your award and hope to see you at the conference in Worcester this fall. Sincerely, Silvana Bryan, President, School Nutrition Association of Massachusetts. And if I could just add my thanks as well, because we do a lot of things from unit A negotiations to Supper with the Super to a great breakfast for the winners of our of our school week's promotion and on marketing breakfast. And I got to cook for the fifth grade class yesterday, the winners, and at Millville. And it was amazing. And there is a certain esprit de corps that this district does have in a lot of areas. And Mrs. Sheridan, Jean, you have had that impact on so many students and staff. So on behalf of all of us, something for the East of Bonnet and the Easter basket.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to say again, congratulations.
Thank you. First, I wanted to thank Dr. Hawkeye for nominating me. It was complete and it was shocking because I didn't expect it. And more importantly, the staff here in both districts. You know, we, the kids, our staff is second to none. They help each other in every way when we're talking about your negotiations. I know Rachel does a lot of them, but on the day she couldn't do them, the woman from the complex, Denise Andre, came over and cooked it. So everybody's willing to help everybody, and it really is a great staff, far to none. So between them and my administrative help, Laura Reyes, because I share a district, somebody's always on top of it. So I'm very lucky to have a staff that I do. And thank you.
Congratulations. Job well done.
Thank you.
And so we're still in public forum. I thought I was going to have to enforce a time limit tonight on public forum, but we'll move on to our report of the student representatives. Nice to see you.
It's been a while since we've been able to show up, but thankfully, the reason is because our students have been so busy lately. So we've got a lot of great news to report tonight. We'll start off with the student council. The student council, as we've been mentioning, prepared for and attended the state conference. And our member, Eric Eisner, is actually a member of the state board representing our region, central Massachusetts, as their president. And it was really exciting to have this opportunity because we got to see Eric in his leadership position. And the council also got to flourish doing workshops, benefiting, meeting other people, new ideas. But definitely, our proudest moment is we were actually awarded the Gold Council of Excellence, which is the highest honor a student council can receive in Massachusetts. And it was really, really exciting because we've been working toward this ever since I was a freshman, when we started our rebuilding phase. And the last time we got gold, it's years, years ago. So this was really a major accomplishment for both our advisor, Ms. Sacco, and all of us, our students, working hard at it. So we were very excited about that. But it doesn't stop here. We're planning autism awareness events in April and also Spread the Word to End the Word rallies, which are rallies, banners, and just a school culture event to raise awareness of the word retarded and why it should not be used in school environments and why it's harmful to people. In even more exciting news, we have the spring conference coming up, which is, again, a regional thing. That will be Eric's last event as central president, and he will give his almost certainly tearful farewell address to the central Massachusetts region. It's going to be very exciting, though, because we're not done yet. We actually have one of our members, Anita LaHue, who will be running for vice president of the region. So our first person to ever run for region, we have someone following up the next year. So we're very excited about that. And we wish her the best of luck. Sports, spring sports have started off, and that includes baseball, softball, men's and women's tennis, men's and women's track, and all the fantastic things we often offer at BMR. We're very excited. First games are also coming up. Dive right into it. And we actually had a survey sent to all students with more focus on freshmen through juniors, less on seniors, asking them if they'd be interested in some other sports at BMR, if they'd participate in certain co-op programs such as lacrosse and swimming, and really just to get an idea of what students are looking for. So if there is demand, we could expand our sports programs.
Have you gotten results on that yet?
I've not heard of it. It was run by our principal, Mr. Dudek, so.
Do you know if it stemmed down to the middle school or is it just, was it just at the high school?
I'm not aware. I think it was just the high school level, but I'm not positive. In seniors news, one of our favorite events every year, Mr. BMR is coming up, and that will be March 31st, starting at six. That's very, very exciting. I'll actually be vying for the title of Mr. BMR. But that's always a very fun event. There'll be refreshments, there'll be a 50-50 raffle, and it's just going to be really exciting. It's always fun to see the guys go up there and make a fool out of themselves. Prom, arguably the biggest event for the upperclassmen, that'll be April 21st, which is the Thursday of April vacation. And that'll be at Pleasant Valley Country Club. That'll be from 6:00 to 10:00. But new this year, we actually had Paradise Cafe in Blackstone, one of our local small businesses, actually reach out to us and ask if they could host a after-prom event. That'd just be something to offer for people, really exciting. So we're actually going to have a breakfast buffet after-prom for those who chose to choose to go. And that'll be just another $10 you pay when you buy your prom ticket, and that's a breakfast buffet. Really cool, nice late-night thing for the kids. As far as the principal's council go, their biggest event of the year also occurred, and that was the Band-Aid. We had four bands show up. It was really cool. Everyone got to enjoy it. I myself volunteered there. We had some sweet sounds kicking in the auditorium, and everyone had a great time that attended. Money was raised for senior scholarships. This week is also very busy for our sophomores because the MCAS is being administered, language arts. And that's very important because it reflects on our school, and they're taking it very seriously. And I think we have a very good school culture as far as the MCAS goes. I think we treat it well. In band news, winter activities are actually starting to wrap up as far as winter guard and winter percussion. I know our finals are in the second week of April. I think the guards are the last week of March. And we also have our MICA coming up, which is our statewide competition for the wind ensemble. But we have more good news. It just doesn't end. We've had some great stuff happening. Jazz band went to their central district competition and actually won the gold medal, which also hasn't happened in a few years. This was really exciting because we're honestly a very young and a very inexperienced program coming into this year, but we worked really hard, a lot of hours. We brought people in like Paul Alberta, as we've mentioned, and just we really all put it together and were able to get the gold, which is a huge honor. And we advanced to state's competition, and it stopped there, but we had a good performance that night, and I couldn't be more proud of our ensemble. The Drama Club has started practices. Their spring production is going to be Bye Bye Birdie. More news of that to come. And then lastly, well, not lastly, sorry, the National Honor Society, their induction will be April 28th. We'll get out some times for that. We've had to move some stuff around due to the many exciting things happening this time of year. But that's when our seniors formally leave the National Honor Society, and we induct our sophomores or upperclassmen who have had the academic qualifications and have demonstrated properly in their packet that they're qualified. Earlier, about a month back, our political organizations at BMR actually had a very exciting event organized by our high school Democrats, but the high school Republicans actually attended. We brought State Representative John Fernandez from Milford in, and he talked to the students about getting involved, what to think of elections, and really how to do your part as a young person. And it was absolutely fantastic. It was so nice for students to be able to see someone that holds higher office in our state and really learn how to get involved. A STEM trip was taken recently, being science, technology, engineering, mathematics. It was sponsored by Go Army, but it was held at Framing Camp State. Any students at the high school were able to sign up and attend, and you learned about patents, you learned about designing products, you learned about how to take something from the idea stage to engineering and keep going. And you also learned, if you so choose, about joining the military and how you can get great jobs out of that. A while back also, we had our arts night. I know some of you were in attendance. It was very fun. That featured our bands, that featured our chorus, and that featured our arts department. Got to see lots of student work and robotics, too. It was a really cool night to just bring all of BMR together and show what we've been doing. And lastly, the junior class had a very new, very interesting, and very fun fundraiser, which was actually the teacher roast. A couple teachers who willingly volunteered themselves, went up on the stage and were roasted by the students. There were some good cracks back and forth. I honestly think the teachers got some of the students even more than the students got to them. But it was a really fun night, and I hope it's a tradition that continues into our future. So sorry for a long rundown tonight, but it's only because we've been very productive, and we've been doing a lot at BMR this time of year.
Great. Definitely. Anyone have any questions?
So that was great. I loved hearing about the young Democrats and young Republicans. So if you guys want to get together, and the end of April, there's a Day on the Hill that we go into, and it's about funding public education with all the senators and representatives. Representative Fernandez is always there. Great. You get a great lunch. It's free for you. You know, school committee members, it was a small fee that, you know, superintendent pays for. So if you want to go back to see Mr. Dudek, and I'm sure Mr. Himmelberger will do it as well, if you want to get a group of students together and come, it's a great process. You'll be in the chambers, we'll be seeing them go back and forth, and it's really centered around public, funding public education. And it's going to be very, very interesting this year.
What's the date for that?
That day is April 26th. And you can sign up online, and they'll just bill the district, but you guys are free. So if you get, if you get five or 10 kids that want to go in, we'll get a van or a bus, or you can take the train in and hang out or whatever.
Sounds like a really exciting opportunity. I'll definitely follow up on that. Thank you for bringing that up.
Any other questions?
How many more days?
How many more days? Actually, Eric's the count guy. I'm sorry. I'm letting you down tonight. But our last day is May 20th, so really, less than two months of actual days, and as far as school days, even less. It's dipped below 50, I know that.
Do we know where Eric's going to school yet?
We don't know, but he, recent news, he got into Bentley, which is very exciting.
Yeah, great. Big choices. That's great. And have you bought your prom tickets yet? Are they on sale yet?
Not on sale yet, but we'll be selling them soon.
That's great to hear about the breakfast.
Yeah, it's a really cool alternative for students.
Great idea. Thank you to the owners of that restaurant that have reached out. That's a good, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Moving on, we have Consent Agenda A, Warrants to Use Facilities, Field Trip Requests, and Minutes of Meeting for March 10th. And we had field trips. We have Assumption College, March 29th, Nichols College, April 12th, and Worcester State, April 26th. So I'm looking for, do we want to approve them all together or separate?
Yeah, move Consent Agenda A.
Motion made by Jane and second by Tara. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Vice members? And we'll move on to the school committee. I guess we'll start with our regional agreement update, which I know we all know that there's been a lot of activity lately with our putting the warrant items forward to our two towns. And we've definitely made it very public that we're having extra meetings for information purposes so we can make sure that everyone understands what the intentions are with changing the regional agreement. Just that one line in the agreement that currently stops kids, elementary kids, from being able to cross the town lines, if you want to say. So a simple fix to that will allow our elementary kids to have the privilege, as our middle school and high school children already do, of, you know, starting their early years together and moving forward through the high school. So a lot of conversation has come up, obviously on Facebook, and a few reach-outs to us as the committee. I will share, we have some dates available. We were able to confirm some public community places where people may not, you know, may be a little more comfortable to join us instead of coming into a school. If you don't have children in school, we don't want you to be intimidated by visiting us here. It's a little crowded. So we've opened up our schedules for Thursday, April 21st, 4:00 p.m. at the Millville Senior Center. It is not just for seniors, it is for any public Blackstone or Millville, whatever you can attend. You don't have to be a Millville resident to come to the Millville Senior Center. Same night, April 21st, 6:30 p.m., we will be at the Blackstone Library. Again, Millville residents are definitely welcome, as well as Blackstone, parents, taxpayers. It's not, it's just informational. We're hoping to have some frequently asked questions available with answers that might get some out of the way. I think we're going to work on an agenda as a committee just to run in an orderly fashion for those two meetings. And we're also opening up the two elementary schools. And this was actually brought to us as a request from parents that have never been to the, either of the two schools, or, you know, they're always in Millville, they've been to Millville for preschool, never been to another building. Our Blackstone parents do have the privilege of, if they attended preschool in Millville, they're familiar with the building, but we want to make sure we have the opportunity equally for both towns. So on Monday, April 4th, at 5:00 p.m., we will have our administrators available to give tours of the complex, the JFK side and AFM side in Blackstone. And that will run through 6:15. They will be finished at 6:15 because they have PTO meetings on those nights, which is why we scheduled it on a Monday, so the administrators are there with us. And I believe some of us will be available. We haven't actually worked those dates out yet. Monday, May 2nd, 5:00 p.m. at Millville Elementary School, same thing, open for tours with Dr. Hawkeye, principal, at that building. We will be in attendance for a talk and tour setting, just for parents that might say, you know, have already had in their mind where their child was going to be, but is curious to know what's going on in the town next door. So with that being said, I think we do need time to talk about the agenda for our April 21st meetings. We need time to figure out some frequently asked questions. I have been trying to keep track of some that have come up, and we need to go through those together. I was already going to request a workshop for next Thursday. We don't have a meeting, actually, for the next two weeks. So next Thursday, I was going to ask for a budget workshop, but I would like to also include the regional agreement so we can confirm an agenda for our April 21st meeting in both towns and frequently asked questions. And I would like to make sure if you're all getting questions or seeing them, if you could forward them to me, I'll keep them on a running document so we can hash those out together when we do have a workshop. And that is the information I have on that part. Before I move into the next part, anyone else want to add to that?
So the 31st at what time?
Good question. What works for everybody? I know last time earlier was better, but is there a preference?
If it's five.
Does anyone that can't be here on the 31st?
Mr. BMR. I'll attend to that at some point. I can be there up until a certain point, so I'll see Chris and Griffin embarrass themselves, but yeah.
Kim is Mr. BMR, sorry.
Did he say that was at 7:00?
6:00.
31st.
6 o'clock.
Is that 6:00?
Yeah, but I don't plan on me, though, so.
So do we want to say 6:00, or do we want to stay with our 7 o'clock time? What's better? I'm good for anything.
It doesn't matter to me.
For me, our 5 o'clock time.
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock.
So the agenda's going to be specifically what?
I...
Well, it's going to be budget.
Budget.
The agenda for our workshop?
The 31st, yeah.
I'm sorry. We're having a budget workshop and then regional agreement workshop.
So basically, you want to work out the choreography for the regional agreement?
Right. We just, we all need to be in sync for our April 21st meetings. We can't share documents and send emails back and forth, so we need to be able to sit at a table and say, these are the questions, how do we want to answer them? For the frequently asked, because I think Bill was the one that recommended, you know, just having that FAQ sheet. We're obviously going to have a public time at these meetings where people can ask those questions, and, you know, we'll obviously all answer them to the best of our ability. And just to set a timeline for that, those meetings, because we're, we're only allotted so much time, obviously, for the places. So I would say we need at least two hours, just to be fair, because we have some budget conversations, too.
Earlier the better, then.
Yeah.
And I'm sure Erin and I will make a template, so it won't be so time-consuming, but I think just to review that template and just make sure that, you know, we discuss the norms of the meeting, what the expectation is for the meeting, and just make sure that there's a flow to the meetings, I think is really the general purpose of bringing that up on next week at our budget. So the primary focus for that agenda will be budget, but just to review, you know, the template.
Well, and also, who's going to be at which ones?
Is it worth doing a, like, Google Forms and having it live and sending the link out, having people just kind of put their questions in?
While we're here?
It could be while we're here even before.
We can't do it before.
Well, we could do it before. The public, all this is informational, so then it would, we'd be able to sort it, you know, and have it for us at that workshop, you know, if there, you know, questions. I do it all the time with staff.
I think we'd be violating the open meeting law by sharing.
We wouldn't be deliberating anything. All we would do is getting questions from the public and from us. We could put our questions in.
So you're saying open up a document to the public?
Well, it's just a link. It would be like a survey, like, it's a simple Google survey where you answer various questions, and it puts it into a spreadsheet automatically, and we just kind of print it out. We bring it here and it's part of the, we don't have to do it.
I think there's definitely a calling for it in the public where they could submit their questions now. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, and we could have.
I'll create, I'll create a Google, but it'll only be one question because it's really list your concerns. There's nothing that...
Or list your questions. There may not be concerns.
Well, it could be, you know, what town you're from, and then whatever the questions are, because we can sort that later. Not that the town matters, it really doesn't.
Right, right.
It's just a simple way, we're not sorting it. All we do is put it in a spreadsheet, sort it, you know, and then go from there.
But you think it's okay if we're all looking at it before?
Yeah, because we're not deliberating anything.
Well, but we really all wouldn't be looking at it. It would be put out by one, collected by one, and sorted by one. So realistically...
But we could also put our questions in there as well.
Oh, right, right, right.
We don't have to do that. We can just do it live, too. That's fine.
I think that might be a good idea, Bill, if you think that we're okay on the open meeting law, because they need, I think they're anxiously looking for a way to communicate with us.
And the more ways that we have to communicate, the better. Whether it's social media, whether it's a survey, whether it's one way or another, we can't say that we're not asking for the feedback. So I will get that out hopefully by the end of the weekend, and we'll try to get, you know, that timeline of, they'll have a good six days to get that information out, and we'll ask them to.
You could actually, in the Google Form, embed the video, and they could watch it right in the form.
That's something you might have to do.
Well, if I could do it, you could do it, believe me, because it's so, the Google Forms are so easy to kind of do.
But actually, in all seriousness, I'm going to say how disappointed I am in this empty room tonight, because for the amount of people that want to speak up on social media but then say, "Don't talk on social media," we made it very clear, we have a lot of meetings that are public meetings, and this is the time and the place, and our room is empty. So I am, I'm disappointed. I'm just going to say that to the public, my public friends and foes, because you, you can be opposed to anything you want, but if you don't really want the facts, then...
It's just a missed opportunity.
It is. It's very sad because we're talking about our kids, and that's a sensitive subject. So with that being said, I'm going to present a draft of something that's been asked for that nobody's here to see, and this is just the beginning. People have asked for a timeline of our work. And with all due respect to Wendy, this goes back much further than I even have information on. 2012?
2012 is when both Erin and myself were put on the regional agreement committee.
And it was a very different conversation that, you know, was not something we were willing to move forward with at that moment, because it wasn't being done the right way. So I have a draft of a timeline here, and I'm not, I...
Didn't decide.
I don't know when we'll have time to finish this, because it is a working document, and we'll have to probably work on it with our workshop next week. But I tried to put everything in order from the time that we started discussing it as a committee. I don't have the 2012 information here yet, but I will find it.
Before you go, did we agree on a time for the 31st for our workshop?
5 o'clock?
5 o'clock?
5:00 p.m. That's a workshop. Thank you. So we started with, when we really went out to the community, October of 2014, we, so it actually goes back to September. September of 2014, Jane had put together a community involvement brochure, and it had several opportunities in it, here's a picture of it, that we needed help with. And this went home in backpacks, this went to our libraries, this went on cable, this went to senior centers. This was out and available. Did I put that here? It was supposed to attract community members to serve on advisory subcommittees.
And that's, those subcommittees were not just the regional agreement. It was...
It was strategic planning, regional agreement, financial task force, that was Bill's survey, and I guess I need to go to eye doctor.
Then feedback only.
Thank you. There was two, it was a lot of information, and we sent it home. It was a tri-fold sheet, and definitely got response from it. We definitely got response from it, and I believe we compiled the list from here to move forward with a few items. And, you know, regional agreement has the limelight right now, but there were other issues that we did get help with from our, our general public. December of 2014, this is the actual post that was on our website, asking you to participate in two surveys we had at the time. One was a budget, budget survey, and the second one was regional agreement. One was a budget, budget survey, and the second one was regional agreement. And this was really a baseline of where, to get a feel from the community on where we, where we stood with the community, where we needed to go. And again, this was shared on our website, social media. It was emailed to both towns' board of selectmen, the town administrator, and it was in the enlightener that we were looking for answers to these surveys. And Alan sent home a district-wide email with the link to the surveys. So again, this is a draft, so I have some placeholders here. This is, this is the...
The first survey.
First survey. So this was what you linked to with the answers. So question-wise, I'm not going to read them all, but they're going to be on here. This is how we gathered information from the public on where we should go with our regional agreement. So how many questions?
There were 46 responses to this survey.
But how many questions total? Eight. It was an eight-question survey. Forty-six people responded? And then these are different slides that had been presented to our committee from these, that survey in particular.
And some of which you'll see, you've been noticing on the video.
Yeah. We also had a lot of comments, which I could not include on this slideshow, just because it was already a lot of slides.
But even prior to presenting that to a committee meeting, we took the results of the survey, the results of the brochure, and did an open invitation flyer to anybody who wanted to come to a...
That's here.
Join the committee.
These are just answers to the survey. So, oh, and these are some of the comments that we got from that survey in December of 2014. So we asked, these were answers to questions. What opportunities do you see? Next steps. Sent a letter asking, telling people we were going to present our survey results. We had maybe 10 or 12 people, parents here for that. This is the presentation that was given to them that night. That was, I think this was March 10th of 2015.
Yes.
Okay. While they were here, we actually had work for them to do, which was answer these questions in groups. What are, what are the weaknesses with the current model of our schools? What are the opportunities you see? I have some duplicate slides here that we're going to work on, that's why it's a draft. We surveyed middle school teachers and students in the spring of 2015. This is all gathered here. 127 kids, I think we had 100% participation in that, asking them about their transition. So after March 10th, we moved into, it was, it was, it was figured out, out of those March 10th, where we need to focus. So it was social media and marketing, building logistics, budget, staffing logistics. And this is the conclusion that came out of those, I think it was two nights, so wasn't it more than one?
Yeah, there were two-night sessions and we brainstormed the goals for each of those subcommittees as a whole. We had 25 people who asked to join their, the regional agreement subcommittees, and they consisted of administrators, they consisted of, they consisted of administrators, parents from both towns, teachers from, from both schools, school committee members.
So this is, April 6th of 2015, we sent this letter out, the same methods we used for everything else, emails, home in backpacks, posted on cable, telling people what we were looking for, what subcommittees we were looking for. Actually, I think we called them focus groups, study groups in that, very right before the list. So let's be clear about that, that it was not sworn in subcommittee positions that helped us with this. There were focus groups for social media.
Building, staffing, transportation, and budget.
Thank you. And there's actually, then we had our next, it was a two-page letter with the dates of what we were...
Kind of a timeline, a timeline for the committees to do their work.
There you go. Fall of 2015. Can you read that?
Yeah. Well, we were hoping in April of 16, the individual focus groups would meet, define their goals, set that. In May, oh, the transportation, because we didn't think transportation could be done for a while, and those groups were going to meet and then the budget group was going to meet, and by August, everybody would report back. And in the fall... Social media, study groups would share out.
Would start sharing out the information.
So there was a section on there, if you wanted to volunteer, that's where you signed up to do so. Do you know, and is that what you were saying?
And that's where we had 25, 25 community members sign up.
It was parents, it was a lot of staff, community members, there was a selectman from town.
I think an important thing to be clear about is that it was a result of those initial meetings, not the focus group meetings, but the initial meetings, to move forward with the idea. So it's not a new idea that came up at our last school committee.
That was the conclusion.
Well, and I don't, I don't think we moved forward... No. Based on what we wanted to see happen. We had those discussion groups and we got in small groups and we gave them post-its and they brainstormed, and I believe I still have the brainstorm list of all the post-its, of the strengths and the focus for growth. And, and that's where all that information came from. It did not come from committee members. In the beginning, in, in 2012, we, Erin and I did the research behind different configurations, but we never moved forward until 2014, 2014. And we actually set up that two-year plan of a study, and that's what we called it, a two-year study, to see where we were going to go with that. And based on the results of these strengths and the areas of focus, we needed to move forward in that small group, whether it was 10 or could have been 50, that small group made the decision to keep moving forward. So I think that needs to be definitely shared, because it's not, you know, with all due respect, the superintendent completely stayed out of it, and, and we moved forward with this. And so I think it's important to let people out there know that it wasn't something the committee took a stance on. We moved forward based on the results of those meetings. And this feedback, Jim?
So I guess just to continue, there was a lot of work by some of these subgroups. There were some that determined that they could not come up with the answers that would be necessary, such as transportation. It's a work in progress, because even our current transportation changes year to year, and without an exact configuration, the answers are, you know, harder to, to figure out. But since that time, since the spring of 2015, we do now have software that will assist us with that, and we do expect to have detailed answers on transportation by the end of next week. Correct. So next on this timeline were answers to, or really, this was just...
This was the slideshow that was created out of the staffing and building meetings that we've had, and I believe we had three. I think we had three meetings that we sat and we jointly combined on the last one, because we thought it was important for building and staffing to join in. And so Erin's actually going through the slides that came out of those focus groups.
And there was a lot of research. It was how many classrooms were in each building. I was not on one of these, but I was here one night when they were doing it and they had the maps of the building to figure out who, what classes would fit where and how many kids would fit in each building, elementary building.
We also had administrators here talking through the, the regulations and looking at...
Didn't we have all three?
We did, we did.
Elementary principals were a part of this, so.
They, they did give a lot of feedback. Yep.
This was a lot of work that they put into headcounts and space that we would have, what would need to be moved, and how is really going to be determined once we actually...
Which is what the budget subcommittee said, it's, you know, we, we need to know, you know, that it's going and then...
That is going to be work going forward from a vote, knowing that we need to, you know, to, to put the budget into those line items and...
And make the logistics work and make it, you know, not just say yay and then people have moved. I mean, life doesn't work that way.
So this is, again, just a draft of a timeline. Still going to go backwards and see if there's anything that is pertaining to it in this fashion from 2012. There were discussions back in 2012 for budget reasons of closing a building, and, and that does not pertain to this. We are not closing a building, we are not at all even considering that. So I myself would keep that information out of this timeline, because this doesn't pertain to what was actually gathered and studied here. If anyone wants to add to this and you have copies of letters or emails that you want included, please send them to me and I will gladly add them to the 78-page slideshow that we have here right now. Any questions? Anyone want to add anything? There's been a lot of activity, so.
I just, I, I want to clarify why that we chose the dates that we chose, because we did meet as a group to make sure that we could be here. And, and if people go back to our last meeting, they will notice that because of our own work schedules, people couldn't meet before four o'clock. So that's why there's not early afternoon sessions. And we had secured, we had recommended two dates, April 21st and then the Tuesday, April 26th, after the vacation, but the Blackstone Library had one date available to us, one. That was it. So if we wanted to do a community event, we did it. Well, I take that back. They had another date available to us, but it was this week and we weren't available. So, you know, keeping our schedules into account with what we had already talked about, that's the reason that the dates appeared on both.
Thank giving the community time to plan for those dates.
Yeah.
They have a month's notice, so we definitely recognize this.
And we had, we had hoped to go later with one of the school committee meeting, on the school committee night, but the school committee, the PTO expressed an opinion that their meetings ran lengthy and they didn't want to run even longer into the night. So...
Yeah. That was for the, for the two building tours.
Yeah, so. So I think there's four opportunities. There's also our committee forum at our meetings that are posted. So I think there's plenty of opportunity to come out and ask those questions. And I think we're doing our due diligence. I really do.
Yeah. And we're definitely, you know, we'll definitely answer what we can, and there are going to be, with any transition, there would be things that, you know, need to be looked into further or may not even come across until we're in, in that motion. So what, what we are looking for now is to make sure the public is educated on what and why, and how the vote affects our schools. And I think we're doing a good job with that. So if we keep moving forward, we'll, at least won't have to be attacked on our town floors. Next on the agenda, if there are no other discussions. The discussion of the district three-year plan. I actually asked Alan to put this on here tonight, because we talked about it last November and we talked about bringing it to our FinComs, I think with our budget presentations will be a fine time to do that. So I just wanted us to have a second look at it. I think we all basically agreed on everything, except for a few words under the human resource. Were we going to change human resource to something else? So we just want to make sure this is up to par where we want it to be, so we can present it on March 30th to Millville, April 11th to Blackstone, if you want to put those dates on your calendar. The more committee members that are present. Okay.
April when is Blackstone?
April 11th.
Seven o'clock.
For both of them. So do you want to run through this and...
Certainly, as, thank you very much, Mrs. Vannaco. We did put this together as a three-year plan around personnel, technology, curriculum, and facilities. And I also sent out this afternoon a list of all of the upcoming meetings and events, and it's a, it's a growing list, but it's a busy nine weeks in front of us, but I want to, I'll update that as other things be, are added to it. But certainly there are four key dates around, as Mrs. Vannaco said, around the regional agreement, information that everyone can take advantage of. We also, as we will see later, have a draft of the technology plan that coincides with the, the three-year plan here as well. Personnel, certainly, as we have stated here, is, is the single most expensive part of any school budget, and certainly the cost of the, of managing personnel and of, of hiring and replacing due to appropriation is clearly outlined here. Obviously, the longer you can, you can retain staff and, and work with them as they improve their professional practice, that is the key. And I think it's important as we go forward to keep that in mind. We know that technology moves quickly and we had spent some, some serious money several years ago on technology. It, it continues to evolve. I think that between Mr. Gonzalez and Dr. Thompson, we have a lot of clear insight into what we want to do, and you'll see that as we go through, as, as Dr. Thompson will take us through the tech plan. But there is a lot of things driving this around what our students are facing when they leave us in, in work and in higher education, along with the assessment and test requirements that we will be saddled with as the state continues to move through the next generation of our assessments. Curriculum is still being debated, as we know, from the ballot question that's coming up in November around Common Core. Certainly, we feel that the work that we have done across the state over the last several years to refine the curriculum, to make it valid and validate it as we continue to prepare students for 21st century college and career, is important. We are still wrestling with, the state is still wrestling with the science standards, which have still not been signed off on. However, we do know that the way we teach has dramatically changed, and how we teach it and when we teach it has dramatically changed, and we must keep pace with, with the curriculum, certainly around math and science. The fourth section refers to the maintenance of the facilities, and we have two schools, primarily JFK and the high school, that are old by school standards, with original equipment in some cases, that is becoming more and more of a challenge to maintain. And obviously, to renovate those on a, on a carefully constructed plan that allows the towns to support that is very important for the future of our district. And we do have facility studies that, with the committee's permission, we will share, we'll put up online and share with the towns as well, that assess the conditions of our buildings and, and how best to address them moving forward. So that is a review of the three-year plan for the district, which we will share on the 31st and on the 11th with the finance committees. And we look forward to, to the next three years. They will be challenged, challenging us in many ways, but I believe that we have the capacity to meet them. It's important to know that we are committed as a community, as an educational community, to work with all stakeholders to improve our students' educational opportunities. It is a rapidly changing world, as, as some have heard me say. What was not available 10 years ago that we have today and what may be going, changing over the next five to 10 years is amazing. Certainly, jobs are being done differently, jobs are disappearing, the way we work is changing rapidly, and our students really have to be able to, to think, to analyze, to critically analyze. think, to analyze, to critically analyze all of the different changes that are occurring in their world. And any of us who, who interact with, with young students know how technologically advanced they can be, and how sometimes they need some direction and guidance in using that technology. And I think that that is critical for us, as you will see when we look at the draft of the tech plan. So I think that we have an awful lot of opportunity. We have an awful lot of, many challenges in front of us, and I look forward to, to working to get us in the very best position that we can be in.
Do we, this technology plan is a draft, so.
Yes, and my thanks to.
This is not being presented in.
No, no, but, but I think it's important to, to have this in tandem with our three-year plan, and my thanks to Dave and to Osiris, who did great, great work on, on this draft to see where we are. You know, and when, when the tech directors in the area meet, they use Mr. Gonzalez as a resource, certainly around E-rate funding, certainly around some of the changes that we have made and where we think we want to be to support assessments and, and to put the right technology in, in the hands of the students at the right time. And this, this draft certainly speaks to that.
Okay. And does that go into your report of superintendent?
Yeah, I think, I think.
I was gonna.
Oh, good. All right.
Before we leave school committee.
Please do.
Oh. I was gonna do it at committee forum.
No, no. Did you just say you were gonna talk about technology, Dave? Sorry.
In his report.
In his update, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Not tremendously detailed, but just the process and such.
So if you would like to.
Unless you want to move me up, I'm fine.
Move it into budget.
If you have something else in hand though.
When we go into budget. Around the FY17 budget, my thanks to the committee for adopting a realistic budget of $22,585,365. This represents a 3.6% increase in our operating budget. In order to hit that number, we are in the process of looking at where we must reduce by $473,712. There have been a lot of requests for supporting documentation. We're pulling those together, and we'll have those to the committee early next week for discussion on Thursday. Going before the finance committees, and I'm sure before the boards of selectmen, 3.6% seems like a big number. But when you look at it over time, where we have been, and, and I think Mr. Chaplin made this point last year, that if we can get small incremental planned increases, that's all we really need to be able to meet the, the requirements of our 21st century education. And, but we will be reducing the amount and suggesting to the committee next week on ways that we can do that, to meet that adopted budget number, which represents a 3.6% increase. There's still, again, many, many factors in play. We don't hear much coming out of the State House in terms of additional opportunities, and I think that that is consistent with what we've heard, that there won't be additional funding over and above what has been put forth in the original House One budget. And so that makes it more of a challenge for us to be creative in terms of postponing maybe expenditures that we can postpone and fighting for the ones that we are in desperate need of currently, and that we have to be able to substantiate every dollar, every, every penny that we spend. And I believe that we do that. Mrs. Cobb and, and Dr. Thompson and myself are, are looking through this line by line to have recommendations and the data for the committee for next Thursday's workshop, which I, I think is well timed, so that we can begin to understand the priorities in front of us and how best to, to meet them. And, and it will be a challenge, but I believe that we have some of the, the, the structure in place to be able to meet that. So we'll get that, all of the documentation that has been requested by the committee with, with our recommendations for next Thursday's meeting, and, and then we move forward to, to meet with, with the town boards as we go forward over the next several weeks. And it will, it will be a challenge only because most districts are faced with the fact that the federal and state levels are not supporting public education. And so that's going to be our challenge over the next several weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Himmelberger on the budget? And your report of the assistant superintendent?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight a few things and a couple disclaimers. This, this is very much a draft. It probably is three and a half days old at this point in time. So what happened is Mr. Gonzalez and I sat down, brainstormed a few things, started a Google Doc, and this is what you have. So he fixed mine, I fixed his, and this is what we have. But a, a couple things with it, with the technology plan, and, you know, I, I know I'm, I'm speaking to people that, that believe this, but just for the people out, out there in the public, you know, we need to create a learning environment that harnesses technology to facilitate higher-order thinking, effective communication, and we need to rethink our learning outcomes. The requirements of this generation and what they will need to be able to do as they go forward into the workplace are totally different, and being able to use technology in their learning and how they learn is extremely important. I was with a friend last week, and they pointed out that, you know, they, your average student has all the information that you would see in any library in their pocket. So we need to think totally differently about how we educate. It's not about knowing information, it's about using information, analyzing information, and using it to produce products and move knowledge, learning, and what, and the work that they do forward. So in order for that to happen, it has to start in our schools. That combined with the challenge that in 2019, the, the Department of Ed, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, has said that we will have all testing online. That is the goal. Kind of hoping that there's going to be some sort of golden parachute along with that happening. But in order for children to perform well on assessments on the computer, they need to be using a computer on a daily basis. So with those sorts of things, you, you see a draft of the goals and objectives, some of which I have highlighted in there. You know, as far as the budget goes, and, and we have some preliminary numbers in here, and for the best guess, guestimates, the reality is, is that as, and technology is moving so quickly, that some prices are going to drop, and something new is going to drop in, and that price is going to go up. So it is kind of a moving target. There's a nice draft here of our existing resources and equipment, and, you know, it gets a little technical, but we have replaced servers. We have a new network going into all of our buildings. We expect to be done with that by the first part of May. We are well on target for that. That will increase our speed inside of our buildings, okay? So we will have much more access, much more coverage of our wireless, and the function of the network will be faster and more efficient. With that being said, we do have some old equipment, mainly computer labs. We are moving to a thin client system, where you've got kind of a server with workstations where kids sign in. The advantage of that is that you don't have as many moving parts, as many servers or computers to fix. And if you need to upgrade something, you're just upgrading one or two machines and not 100 some odd machines. So it helps reduce, you know, the, the, the human labor as well. So then we get into, you know, we get into the new hardware, and I won't spend a lot of time on that, and that's probably going to be revised. But the last page, if you get in there, that is kind of, you know, a five-year pullout. And again, this is very much a draft, but it shows kind of the estimated costs going forwards. We had talked originally in the, in the original budget of three classes of one-to-one Chromebooks and three carts going into schools. Next year, that would drop, the year after, fiscal year 18, that would drop to two classes, one-to-one, and then two classes. And eventually, by, you know, fiscal year 20, you would get to one class, where basically you were, you were putting kids in the, one-to-ones in the hands of sixth graders, and they would carry them on up through.
I think this would be great to share with the towns.
Yes, definitely. So network improvements, we, we are finishing, or have finished, Phase One. We do not have any plan to continue into Phase Two next year. We are looking at Phase Two being the fiber. So again, the connection within the building will be very fast and very efficient and lots of coverage. The, the traffic going in and out is still the same what we have. Now, right now, that's not a big problem, but when we start testing, that might be a problem. And, you know, as our interactions become more video and audio, that's more stuff going in and out, so that will become a challenge just, so whether Phase Two fiber stays there or moves to FY19, I don't know, but that probably will need to happen in that frame there, depending on what the testing parameters will be, and again, moving target.
Is that eratable fiber?
It is. It is. And the other piece to it, the other piece to it is that we can, once we have those connections, we can lease our connection to other, other government organizations. So the fire, the police, the town hall, and that sort of thing.
So when you say lease, is there an estimate on what that would bring in?
There probably is. I just.
We're not there yet. We're not there yet. We'll get there.
But you have to do the fiber before you do the.
Right, you have to do the fiber before you start.
Okay.
Right, but that is a potential cost saving down the line. Phone system, and I, I was sharing with, with Mr. Chaplin, the, the adventures of our phone systems in the, in the district. But it is rather old, does not work very well, is not reliable. In fact, when you dial one person, you might not always get them. Sometimes, you know, if the wind's blowing the right way, you get somebody else. So we're looking, once the fiber's there, looking to go, it's, it's always an adventure. The voice-over IP system, where you basically have your phones running off of the internet. You kind of need the fiber connection first before you can do that. But that would mean that through an extension, not only could we call, you know, room to room, but we would get to a point where we could call school to school by just dialing a number or so.
That's an E-rate item too, isn't it?
I, I believe it is, yes.
So we have to have the fiber?
You gotta have the fiber first. Fiber, fiber is, is, is the next step. That, that would be kind of a Phase Three, and that could very well possibly move out another year beyond that. That's not, we could survive a little bit longer. The other challenge that we have down there is smart boards. They, we're one of the, very lucky in that we have smart boards in every single classroom in this district. That's a major accomplishment. However, the, the problem is, they're all kind of put in the same year or two years, so they're all gonna die in the same year or two years. So we need to have a, a replacement plan for that, and you can see that that, going forward, by doing 30 boards over the next three years, we probably will get caught up, and then it's just, you know, we could skip a year and then talk about five and five and five. Computer replacements, I talked about those. And then software, this, this list is not complete. This is just what we could think of, sitting there. Next steps for this is, is to vet this amongst the administrative team. Also in the plan, we talk about bringing a technology committee together and having them do some assessments and what have you. I think, you know, if you do want to see something for the 30th, we can probably try to refine these a little bit more, but again, I, I'm not comfortable with taking the draft off probably until we get through the end of the year.
But what you have listed here is already in this year's budget, recommended.
I believe, believe so, yes. Yep.
The 30 boards?
Yep.
And then just the insurance, I don't think is in here either.
The insurance, well, the, the plan is for the insurance is to have, I think it's about $23 or $25 a year is to have.
Per.
Right, is to have the parents do that. That is not in our budget. So the parents would have the choice of either signing off that they would replace if it's broken, which would be about $100, $250, less than $300, or $25 for the year for the insurance. So that would be kind of the choice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Dr. Thompson?
I think it's a great start. And I, I think the thing's gonna be a living document, because by the time we get five years out to 2020, there's gonna be something else.
Right, of course. We have no idea where it's gonna go.
So it'd be just maintenance of it.
Forget 2020.
Right. It really is something that will need to be revised every, every couple of years.
I do agree with Wendy. I think we should include this in our.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's important, because if we don't make these changes every year, we're going to hit that year where everything breaks. And I, I think we want to prevent that, because the cost.
We're already hitting, we're already hitting it.
Right.
And, and what's, what has happened in the past, and we talk about funding and such, but what has happened in the past, and, you know, you know, and, and you can argue the, you know, the rationale behind it, but, you know, the, the supplies, the replacement of equipment, the buying these sort of things, replacing them going along has not happened because of the budget crunch. So you have, you know, tremendous amount of computers that are dying, you have servers. We had a huge problem earlier in this year with a major server going out on us. There was no backup in place. There's no backup sitting, you know, in the closet to pull out, so we had to scramble for a week, limping along. And, you know, we have, we have, we have a lot of the student and staff stuff, you know, through Google on the cloud, but we, we can't put our student information system on the cloud. There's certain things that we cannot do that with. We need to have network capability. Without those servers, the network doesn't work. Email doesn't work, and it really is quite interesting to see how quickly everything comes to a screeching halt, especially when you have teachers using technology every day with their smart boards, and they can't sign into a server to get to the internet because the server died and we don't have a backup. So those are the, so computer labs need to be replaced, smart boards, projectors need to be replaced, and those things have not been done on a consistent basis moving forward, so we don't really have the capacity. So we've been paying a little bit of catch-up this year.
I mean, the analogy that Wendy's talking about is, you know, all breaking at once, and we all put these Band-Aids on it, are the roofs. We patched those things for 20 years until the big nut came and we had to replace all of them. This is gonna prevent that same scenario from happening.
Right, right. You know, we have that, I mean, we have to have the, you know, the vision to plan, you know, to, to have these costs going forward, but then we also have to have the willpower, the intestinal fortitude to make sure we're doing it, otherwise, we're still back in that, in that same position. And that's consistent across the board. The same with curriculum materials. Those are things that were, that were held back in the past, and now we are behind. So we've made big improvements the last couple of years. I just did my blog on, on the math program. I was blown away with what I saw in first grade, second grade, third, each grade. The amount of math those kids are doing is absolutely amazing. We have first graders talking about conceptual algebra in their classrooms. So that's a testament to the, to the teachers working hard, staying with it, and the kids, the kids are having fun. They're enjoying math. So between those two things, I think we're, you know, it can be done. It can be done.
That was refreshing to read, just from where we were in the fall with the, the cons against our, the envision. So it was very refreshing that you're seeing, you know, the, the.
Payback.
Payback from.
Yeah, and this is only, and it's only gonna get better. I mean, as those kids move forward, but it's really about the conceptual understanding and the real thinking about, they're talking about balancing equations in first grade. You take one out here, you have to put one over there in order to balance the equation. You take one out here, you gotta take one out there in order to keep it balanced. This is first grade. First grade, and that's where we need to be building algebraic thought. Then they will find algebra easily, easier in eighth grade. Sunday maybe geometry in eighth grade, but don't tell anybody I said that. Calculus in junior year, don't tell anybody I said that.
That's what I had.
This, this is a great idea. I like the, the five-year projection, because I'm always thinking how we're gonna go the next stage when we have to go to the towns. And that's the one thing the towns have been hammering us for years, we want a five-year plan. I think this is, this is a good start, you know? So we got the technology, we can do this for facilities, something similar like this, maybe this format.
I think it's visually, it's, it's easy to look at. You know, like it's, there it is.
And maybe we could roll this all into one monstrous document, because that's what the towns are looking for. They want to see that we're planning, we're not just reacting. We're proactive. We have a plan where we're going.
But in order to not react, you have to plan. So right now, we're reacting.
It's good to have a plan.
You have the money, you have to have the money.
You have to execute the plan, otherwise you have to react, so.
You have the money.
But yeah, this is what the towns have been screaming for, for a long time. So this is a good start.
They asked for it last time they were here.
Every year, they really do.
Doesn't mean they're gonna like it, but they have.
Okay. We'll see what they ask. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And moving on to our next public forum.
It's still empty.
And school committee forum. Actually, out of order, I think we'll start with one announcement that we have for. Actually, out of order, I think we'll start with one announcement that we have for tonight.
We received a letter from Mr. Wozniak, and I'm just going to read it. Please accept this letter as a notice of my immediate resignation from my position as a member of the Blackstone Millville Regional District Committee. My resignation will be effective immediately.
And it's actually addressed to our town, the Blackstone Town Clerk, so I'm...
We will pass it along.
He sent a copy to me.
Oh, he did, yes.
So, it is with regret that we accept that letter, and then I believe we'll have to move forward as a committee to appoint to that spot with conjunction with the Blackstone...
So, maybe you can help the public understand what that process would be roughly, because I know what it means for here. What it means for here is the, our quorum is reduced now.
It is.
The Blackstone members have to make a point to be here until the seat gets filled. So, there is a little bit of ripple effect. There's only seven, right, of us now?
Actually, conveniently, the process for having to replace someone is written in our regional agreement, which I've been reading a lot lately. So, it's actually a process with the full committee and the standing Blackstone selectmen that I believe we would seek letters of intent from a Blackstone registered voter that would want to join our committee. So, once we contact the town clerk tomorrow in Blackstone, I don't know, they're probably not open, it's probably going to be Monday.
Right.
It's a holiday tomorrow and Friday, then that process would start. As far as the timeline, I don't...
Is there a timeframe?
Yeah, we'll have to work that out with the town clerk.
When I came out in Millville, I came in something like this. Someone moved out of town. So, I basically stepped forward and said, I was on the fin count at the time, I said I would like that seat. And at the time, it was only a year away from the election for that seat. So, I assumed that seat for a year with the assumption that when that seat comes up for election, I would have to run again. And that's how I sort of came in in Millville. So, I think that's probably the policy of Blackstone. Someone can step forward. I believe it has to be a joint appointment between the selectmen and us, the school committee.
Yes.
And they would just assume that seat. They're not getting four years for the remainder of John's term.
Right, which is three years. He has three years left in his term.
I think you're right, yeah.
So, we'll definitely start working on that as quick as we can. Yeah, and we'll be able to talk about it a little more at our next meeting since we would actually, the letter's dated for today, so... So, I didn't mean to interrupt, but we didn't have a spot on the agenda for received.
I don't have anything else to say.
That's your committee forum, Tara?
I just wanted to point out that the video, the regional agreement video, is on the district website. It's under the school committee tab. So, if anyone's looking for outside of Facebook, social media, it's also posted there.
And it is running on Millville?
And on the cable, yeah.
Is it running in Blackstone? I don't know. Have you seen it?
Jesse said it's there on the weekends, I think, whatever our days are, and he'll make sure that it repeats. Sometimes it doesn't repeat the following weekend, so he'll reach out and make sure that they're going to repeat it.
I'm always looking ahead to the town meetings. How will those go? The one thing you had mentioned, the Common Core's going to be on the ballot next November?
It's a proposed ballot question, yes.
Okay. And what's it going to ask? How is it being phrased? Any idea? I know it's still written in pencil right now, it's not in pen, but...
It's asking to eliminate the Common Core standards and revert back to the Massachusetts standards prior to 2009.
I'm in the minority. I'm one of the few people I know that is in favor of the Common Core.
I am too.
You know, one of the things that, you know, Dr. Thompson, you had talked about is, you know, we're not going to memorize state capitals and things like that anymore. If you want to know, you ask Siri or you ask Google. But the Common Core is more about using that information and making connections and writing and things like that. So, I'm just wondering, sort of thinking out loud, what is our responsibility for educating the public intelligently on that ballot question? Because I think knee-jerk reaction, Common Core, bad. People would vote against it without any information whatsoever. So, really, what...
November, right, November?
Yeah, November.
So, what is our role basically in educating the public?
To prepare that thing in November.
I don't know the answer to that.
I could give you just a very brief overview that Common Core evolved from the Common Core state standards, which were simultaneous along with Race to the Top, which was an addendum to the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. And the Common Core state standards were a huge consortium at the time of forty-six states that agreed on the standards, what we teach, how we teach it, when we teach it, how we assess it. It was then shortened to Common Core. It became politicized, and certain governors and state elected officials railed against a federal-national branding of our standards. The Common Core state standards, eighty-five percent of it, is based on our Massachusetts frameworks.
Absolutely right.
That many, many smart people, talented people, put a lot of time into, and it is universally respected as the right stuff. So, some folks may look at Common Core as a brand, and if that's the issue, we can certainly rename it. But to go back in time and negate the hard work of educators in our state for the last five years makes absolutely no sense. So, that's just my quick interpretation of Common Core.
I'd agree with you on that. I've been on some of the MCAS committees for years, and Mitchell Chester, the Commissioner of Education, is one of the writers of the Common Core. And it's right, there's an eighty-five, minimum eighty-five percent match between the Common Core and what Massachusetts is doing right now. So, for us, you won't see a dramatic change. I mean, I'm just picking a state, say Mississippi, may have a dramatic change in what we're doing, but for us, it's not going to be a dramatic change. It's more about how it's done, and, you know, as Dr. Thompson says, the technology has a huge role in that. So, I think that's something we need to sort of publicize moving forward. One other thing we're thinking about, what's the status of our NEASC report? What's the timeline? When is that coming out? I think that may be something that would drive some budget things, and is that something we should share in the towns' whole budget proposal?
Yes, the, if I may.
Keep going.
Just wanted to respond to that. The NEASC report was a bit tardy coming back from the reviewing visiting team. The process is in the cycle where it has been sent back to Mr. Dudek and the NEASC team for their review of the report and the findings. And that, once that evaluation has been done, it was recently sent back to NEASC for the final adjudication. So, I would expect that that final, final draft or final report will be forthcoming, I would think, before the end of this year, school year.
But you don't think that'll be a useful tool in the budget process, or you don't think it'll catch it in time?
I don't think we'll catch it in time. I think it will be a very useful tool. I will check and see where that stands in the pipeline.
Yeah. I was saying this is an outside set of eyes telling us what to do, and, you know, this, obviously it's going to be aligned with where we're going anyway. I don't think there's any shock or surprises that we're going to have on that.
No.
But I'm just saying, that's just another set of eyes, because I know some of the towns may say, well, that's what you think.
Yeah.
NEASC is telling us the same thing.
Yeah, and I have to say, one of the things that was done very, very well was the self-study. So, a lot of those issues that we expected to show up in the report have already been discussed and addressed in our budget process. So, I haven't personally read it, but my understanding is we don't really have any surprises in there.
At this level, we shouldn't.
No.
I mean, it's basically, they give you a rubric. You know what's on the rubric, you know what you've done.
Right.
There's no shocker there.
Right.
There really is. Just one other thing, again, trying to sell our budget, can we get some kind of like a population or almost like an inventory of our, like, sports and extracurriculars and what their usage or attendance is, you know, for lack of a better term? Like, how many kids are in band? How many kids are in, you know, some of the related arts things and some of the fine arts programs and... You know, because, you know, show the towns, they're getting a lot of bang for their buck. You know, these are outside of just the classroom. What else is going on? You know, where's the money going and, you know, how's it being used? I think that'd be a valuable piece. And I hope to see everyone at Millville on the thirtieth of March at seven, and Blackstone on the eleventh of April at seven. More than is here tonight. So, that's all.
Thank you. Georgia?
Just want to congratulate Mrs. Jean Sheridan again for the award that she received.
Good point.
Oh, yeah.
I would also like to congratulate Mrs. Sheridan and also Matthew Paxton for his winning essay. I understand that's going on to the national...
To national review, yes.
Yep. And I know that the fifth grade class truly enjoyed their chef de jour and breakfast, so I think that was a lot of fun. And I think there are some good things happening in our schools, and I hope to highlight those as we move forward looking at the budgets. I do hope that people come out to the sessions that we have planned or come to our meeting for the public forum, because I understand that there are lots of questions, that there are concerns, and we can't make decisions based on kind of empty threats. We need specific questions and concerns and issues, and we've been asking for that for several years. We're asking for that now. We are all human beings. We can all change our minds. We can all vote our own opinions when it comes to town meeting, but it's better to do so with the facts on the table, and so we need to know what they are.
Thank you. Jim?
I'm going to just speak briefly again on the Day on the Hill, which is the end of April. I'd like to email Mr. Dudek and see if he can get a group of high school students, the Democrats and the Republicans, young Democrats and Republicans, to go. I've already signed up. It's a great day. It's, I think it's, I'm predicting it's going to be one of the better ones of the last few years because there's just so much going on. Everybody, I think we did our part a month ago, or probably more than that, when we voted the resolution to urge the governor and the legislators to really take on the Foundation Review Commission recommendations. And since then, probably thirty other school committees have done it. So, I think it's going to be one of the more interesting ones. So, it'd be great to have students there. The past couple of years I've been, there's always been great groups of students there, and they're free, and it's just, you can't beat the experience. So, that's the one thing. The other thing around town meetings coming up is, is you're going to hear, you're going to hear wonderful soundbites, and they're great to kind of come up with. I'm going to try to, I'm going to beg and urge the town, the town people of Millville and Blackstone to don't rely on soundbites. Come and get the complete picture. You know, everyone in this committee has been through it for many years, and it's nothing personal. You know, we just want to continue to better the district, and we are. You can definitely reap the results of the work that this committee's been doing for years and other committees. But I'm going to beg people not to get sucked into sexy soundbites, because every year there's, and I've been sucked into them before, I've come up with a couple. We just have to see the whole complete picture, and I think we're going to give you a nice complete picture once again, and we've got to move forward. And, you know, Wendy and Erin have spent countless hours on the regional agreement, and I know that's the big thing right now in terms of the, you know, the buzz that are in both towns. But it's been going on a long time. We agree, Wendy put it perfectly when, it was a study. We've been studying this for the last two years. We're done. Our due diligence is over, and I think no matter what, no matter how you feel, you're not going to get judged. Don't judge us, but you're not going to get judged. It just needs to be voted on, and we move on, no matter which way. So, I'm looking forward to those, that dialogue too in terms of those meetings that are coming up, so that's it for me.
And I'll just add Jane's name to that list for the regional agreement, because we have had a lot of hours of, and everyone else has joined in recently, so... So, I will just leave it with the dates of the meetings again. This is everything we have scheduled now from now until our first town meeting, which is Millville. We have April fourth. April fourth, building talk and tour of the John F. Kennedy Building and A.F. Maloney, 5:00 p.m. to 6:15. April twentieth, I'm sorry, April fourteenth, 7:00 p.m., we have a public meeting here. The public is always welcome. We have two public forums during our meetings where you can speak. It's also a great place to get information. April twenty-first, we have two meetings, 4:00 p.m. at the Millville Senior Center and 6:30 p.m. at the Blackstone Library. Those are both discussions on the regional agreement amendment. Then we have another public meeting, April twenty-eighth, at 7:00 p.m. here. Again, public's always welcome. Then we have a building tour of Millville Elementary, talk and tour, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Monday, May second. The following Monday, I believe it's May ninth, I could be...
Yes.
Is the town meeting, where you will have your first chance as a Millville resident to vote on any of your town march items. I stand corrected on the vacancy for the member of the committee, just because I happen to have the regional agreement handy. So, I'm going to read it, just so we're all clear. But I think we should also have our attorney verify this for us, that this is the newest. If a vacancy occurs among the members of the committee, the remaining members of the committee shall give written notice thereof within one month of said vacancy to the selectmen from the town concerned, so this will be Blackstone, who, with the remaining members of the committee from the town concerned, so the Blackstone selectmen and us, shall after one week's notice and within one month of said notice, appoint by roll-call vote another person who is a resident of the same member town as the former member of the committee to fill the vacancy. The selectmen from the town concerned shall fill such vacancy if the remaining members of the committee fail to give said notice within the time herein specified. A majority of the votes of the persons entitled to vote shall be necessary to such appointment. So, if we did, if we do not notify Blackstone within our thirty days, they will take over.
But I guess maybe we do need to ask for clarification, because as you were, as you were reading that, it sounded to me like it's just the Blackstone members of the school committee.
And then I read it again, so I'll read it. The remaining members of this, the committee shall give written notice thereof within one month of said vacancy to the selectmen from the town concerned, who, with the remaining members of the committee from the town concerned...
From the town concerned.
Meaning now Millville.
Yeah.
It's only Blackstone.
That's only Blackstone.
The way you just read that...
The way you just read that, it's just the Blackstone school committee.
We should just get clarification.
Shall after one week's notice and within one month of said notice, appoint by roll-call vote, so Blackstone members with Blackstone selectmen.
That's how I read, that's how I hear.
What I would do is by Monday, get clarification or whenever, and then put a strict timetable forward.
But there's something different from what Steve said here. It's actually, it said this person so appointed shall serve as a member of the committee until the next annual district election, and at such election, a successor shall be elected to serve the balance of the unexpired term for which the former member was serving.
It's only till next year.
It is only till next April, and then it would be a two-year appointment.
Right.
So, but we will get this interpreted and make sure we do everything perfectly. And I know I already mentioned this, but I was very happy to read Dr. Thompson's blog the other day that came up, not only because it was good news, it was just nice to see the communication. And being that there's been so much activity about the regional agreement, I happen to notice how quickly it was shared and often, and I was surprised. I was just, you know, it was shared a lot and read a lot, so I don't know if you have a counter on there, but...
I do.
I think, I think it had a lot of traffic.
I'm not going to go to my head though.
Yeah. So thank you for doing that. It was, it's good for that kind of communication. Because unlike the negative things that are being said about regional agreement or not, it would be really nice to hear people talking about all the good stuff as much as they're talking about things that...
The frustrating things.
That are, right, that are frustrating to them. We have so many good things, like Jane said, breakfast. I wish I had been invited, but...
I wasn't invited either.
But, I mean, our sports programs, our music, there's a lot of exciting stuff. And the experiences the kids get to experience in the years are countless. And we need to recognize that as much as other things. So with that being said, the next meeting, public meeting, is April fourteenth. Any agenda items you can certainly send to me, but we will be reorganizing on that day. So there'll be an agenda made ahead of time. And don't forget our budget slash regional agreement workshop for next Thursday at 5:00 p.m. And we're going into executive session. So actually, I'm looking for a motion to move into executive session for reason of personnel issues, a unit day discussion. And that will be a roll-call vote, please?
Yes.
Motion, please?
Motion.
Motion made by Wendy, second by Jane. Wendy said yes, Tara?
Yes.
Steve?
You bet.
Georgia?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Bill? Aaron? Bill's not going. And we will return only, we will not return.
You might be returning.
We're returning.
We're not returning. Well, I will not be returning to... I have a child over there, so I'll return.
Not going to leave her here for the weekend?
Good night. Adored.